Go ahead and get started. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order. It is September 10th, 2024. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson.
Here.
Vogel Zhang.
Here.
Huen.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Move by Huen. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. All right, on to the next item. We have a proclamation for welcoming week. Whereas our community's success depends on ensuring all residents feel invited here. Today, Corleville is home to people of all backgrounds, including those who were not born in the United States but now call it home. And whereas Corleville is a community that values fresh perspectives, ideas, and initiatives contributed by people with diverse backgrounds and experiences, and is committed to providing a welcoming environment. And whereas this week, we celebrate the spirit of unity that is bringing neighbors together across the entire community. By working together, we can achieve greater prosperity and continue making Corleville a welcoming city where people from around the world feel valued and invited. And whereas during welcoming week, I invite all residents to join this movement of communities nationwide by renewing our commitment to our core American values and by acting in the spirit of welcoming. By recognizing the contributions that we all make to create a vibrant culture and a growing economy for the better good of Corleville, we make our community more prosperous and more inclusive to everyone who calls it home. And whereas regardless of where we are born or what we look like, we are all Corleville residents, united in our efforts to build a strong community comprised of diverse cultures. Let us come together to build communities where every resident can contribute at their best and to reaffirm that our community stands as a beacon of freedom and opportunity. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, do hereby proclaim September 13th through the 22nd as welcoming week. And I sign this on the 10th day of September 2024. Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. I think we have some folks here to accept this proclamation. And if you'd like to say a few words, you step up to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Helen Shun. Good evening.
Evening.
On behalf of the, oh, I should say myself, I'm a vice president of the Asian Pacific Islander American Public Association. So on behalf of this organization, and I sincerely thank Megan Foster, the mayor of the Corleville City, and the city administration for recognizing the welcoming week initiated and organized by the National Welcoming Week Organization and its Iowa City chapter. Yes. According to 2020 U.S. Census, about 30% of Corleville population is minorities. Your recognition of welcoming week will be highly appreciated by our minorities, including 9.4% of Asian Americans in Corleville. So our A-PAPAS mission is to advance Asian Pacific Island communities through promoting Asian culture, helping with immigrants, and increase the leadership and civic engagement. We greatly appreciate our mayor and the Corleville administration for your support for our advocacy. By organizing Corleville Asian festivals, we all know that, it was a great success for, and other events. So we will continue to collaborate with the welcoming week and other nonprofit organizations, public officials, and people sit here, and community leaders, to create a warm and supportive environment for our immigrants and friends from around the world, to make them feel comfortable and consider Corleville their home, and to provide opportunities for our collective voice to be heard. Thank you. Now please allow me to introduce Jerry Lee, and he is a West High student, is a second generation of Chinese immigrant, and he will give a few words.
My name is Jerry Lee, and I'm currently a junior at West High. When my parents first came over from China, everything was new to them, a new language, new foods, and new culture. It was kind of scary for them to be away from friends and family facing strangers. But the welcoming atmosphere here made them feel welcome enough to bring me and my brother into the world. Thanks to them, I got to experience things that they didn't: tree houses, trick-or-treating, the tooth fairy, and the exotic nut known to them as the cashew. I'd like to thank my parents for making me feel comfortable at home, and the nice people here who welcomed them and made them feel comfortable in this community. Together, we are building a better world that is more diverse, inclusive, and represents people from all voices and communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and thank you, Jerry and Helen. My name's Evan Doyle, I'm with Greater Iowa City, and myself, with other community members, have been a part of the Welcoming Week organizing committee. Welcoming Week is an initiative ran by Welcoming America, which is a nationwide nonprofit organization that works towards inclusive economies, specifically towards immigrant and immigrant communities. So Welcoming Week is then a week-long celebration of those immigrants and celebrating inclusivity in welcoming communities across the country and here in Corleville. So as a part of the Welcoming Week organizing committee, we've been putting together multiple Welcoming Week events that are going to be going on throughout Welcoming Week. Some of these events are going to be targeted towards immigrant and immigrant communities, such as like resource fairs and education programs, but they are meant to be welcoming and inclusive to everyone in the community. So there's going to be some more broad events like community fairs and community picnics as well. All of our events for the week are going to be on the Welcome IC Area webpage, which is WelcomeICArea.org. We have these new yard signs that should be popping up anytime now. I believe there are some in the Corleville Public Library, and there should be some in the Iowa City City Hall, North Liberty City Hall, and they should be floating around somewhere in one of the two Johnson County Administration buildings. So go pick up a sign, they're free, just go to wherever you want to go pick it up, grab it, put it in your yard. They're supposed to be longer than just Welcoming Week, as Welcoming Week isn't just a week-long initiative, it's more of an ongoing initiative for communities to be welcoming and inclusive. So this QR code will take you to the Welcome IC Area website. You can find all the events there throughout the week, and you can also find the events on the Better Together 2030 social media page and the Greater Iowa City social media page. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Would you like to have a photo?
Of you fantastic.
Okay, and I just want to give a shout out to my colleague, Hi, Huen, Councilmember Huen, she is the person that, one of the people that does help organize the Asian Fest that you mentioned, so, yeah.
Thank you. I very appreciate it.
All right, let's take this photo. All right. 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 Thank you, and I'll give that to you. Thank you so much for coming. Yes, see you all. Okay, on to the next item. We have community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations the speaker might need. So if there's anyone that would like to speak to us, is there anyone that would like to come up to the microphone? Awesome. Make sure you say your name, and please sign in with your name and address so we can contact you after the meeting.
Hi, my name is John Durst. Is this thing on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm with the Forest Edge Estates Homeowners Association, probably best known to you as a pesterous person about trees. I'm here today, we submitted a petition about those trees along Forest Edge Drive next to the 12th Avenue intersection. We'd like to have those trees removed, they are in the right-of-way. You know, it's kind of been a long, drawn-out process up to this point as far as getting some clarification on the rationale for why the trees haven't been removed. Sorry, distracted. So just trying to reiterate the information that's in our petition already, those trees are in the right-of-way. We worked with the council here to have a median maintenance agreement so that we could move forward with some improvements to those medians. We'll be doing work on our Muddy Creek median here soon to kind of improve that, the line of sight, everything along those. That median agreement was for those medians, and at Muddy Creek and Forest Edge, there's also little wings up along 12th Avenue and down at Muddy Creek off to the side by Linda Lockwood. The intent of that was never to be for trees in the right-of-way. It seems a bit, that was shoehorned in here at the end when we started asking about getting those trees removed. So in this long process of a few years, I've kind of started at the lowest level possible talking with the city forester, then the parks director, then to, I believe the city attorney was next, then with the city administrator, and then finally to the council members, then spoke to the state ombudsman who suggested to do what we're doing now, which is a petition, and then coming here and backing that up. Those trees are ash, so, I mean, that doesn't help them at all either. Trying to think of any other points to make about it. Oh, yeah. And so in that, we also took a look at the council or the city's right-of-way tree permit, and noticed on there that the application or the permit has a line in there that says, "By signing this application, I hereby agree to abide by the terms of the permit conditions if a permit is issued," which also seems a bit not transparent because the terms for those permits aren't available online, so it's, if somebody's signing this, they're not exactly knowing what they're signing for when they sign the application for the permit. So the request is to look at the right-of-way tree management policy here for the city, ensure it adheres to the state code, and put that somewhere so that it can be read online, as well as to take a look at this permit and, you know, probably put those terms online as well, so if somebody is putting in a right-of-way tree application, that they know what those terms are before they sign the application for the permit. And if it is taken up by the council, you know, I'd appreciate having a heads-up, I'll keep an eye on the agendas if it does come up, but otherwise, we're available to have discussion and figure that out. I mean, just getting a good answer on it would be great as well. So I'll leave it at that. A couple of other members from the HOA joined me today, and have their items to say as well.
Hi, everyone, thanks for the time. My name is Jeremy Reynolds, I also live in Forest Edge Estates subdivision. My house is located at 1050 Forest Edge Drive. I'm also a member of our HOA board, and I've lived here in Corleville for five years now, a transplant from Kentucky. I very much appreciate the environment that you guys have helped to create here in the city of Corleville, and my, all of my extended family live here, and so we're very appreciative of all the good things that goes on here in our neck of the woods, as you would say, from Kentucky. I do want to lend my support to the initiative as John has described. We've worked really hard as a small HOA with limited members and limited resources to be as self-sufficient as possible and to be mindful of our resources and how our resources interact with the community around us, including the city of Corleville. So we very much would appreciate your consideration in helping us remedy this ice or at the entrance of the subdivision, as we've worked hard to pool our resources to work on other areas that we know are within our scope of ownership. So just appreciate your time and consideration for the cause.
I'll start and reiterate the same. My name's Lindsay Vidito, I'm a resident in the homeowners association as well at 1060. I've lived there for about three years, and that was just definitely something I noticed in moving in. It's the first thing you see when you come in, there's one dead tree, there's three that are halfway dead, and it just kind of deters from all of that. So as far as a city that's welcoming and something that you definitely see as you come in, it's just an improvement that would be had, and we just happen to be in a stuck position right now, who's kind of responsible for that. So it would be nice to be able to get that taken care of and put in some new healthy trees that can help improve that area. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, and we did receive those materials, the petition, I have looked them over as well, and passed them on to city staff. So appreciate the effort and, hopefully we can keep the conversation going for sure. Okay. On to the next item. Well 16 Tree Clearing Project. In advance of well 16 improvements, we do have some trees that need to be cleared, and we'll start with a bid report on this item. Do we have Sophie?
Yes, Mayor, there was one bid from Triple B Construction from Wilton, Iowa, for $5,795. The engineer's estimate was $15,000, and so the recommendation is to accept the bid from Triple B Construction.
All right. Sounds good. So we will move on to the first resolution.
Resolution accepting bids and awarding the contract for the well 16 tree clearing project introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by.
Second. Seconded by Huen. Questions or discussion on this item?
I have a question. Is that complete removal of these trees, including stump grinding and everything?
Yes, it was. It's a good bid.
Hmm? Yeah, good bid.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang.
Yep.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And the second resolution, please.
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the well 16 tree clearing project introduced for adoption by council member Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or comments or discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have a lease amendment, and this amendment would extend the terms of the lease at 802 Quarry Road to match the Heartlanders agreement to use the Extreme Arena, and that extension would go to June 30th, 2028. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an amendment to the lease agreement with Heartland Hockey LLC for 802 Quarry Road, introduced for adoption by council member Huen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion? All right, roll call.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, assignment of license agreement for parking. As part of the Clear Creek Flood Walls Project, the city obtained an easement in exchange for parking at 209 Second Street. This assigns that right to the new owner of Monica's Restaurant. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving a license agreement for parking with Larson Building LLC at 209 Second Street is introduced for adoption by council member Peterson, seconded by.
Seconded.
Sorry.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Questions or comments?
Just for clarification, that pretty much encompasses the tier of parking closest to the flood wall, is that correct?
No, it's actually, this would be the row of parking closest to the pump station, which would be on the east side of the lot.
East, okay.
So there's the landscaped area, and then this would be to the east of that.
Yeah, okay, got you.
What used to be there?
In the movie gallery.
Yeah.
The what?
Movie gallery.
Movie gallery, okay. So that got torn down, they made this, so.
Yeah, well, we purchased, yeah, that was the, there's the flood pump station there, and this was the land in front of that, and so that's what we exchanged when we got the easement for the wall back on the creek.
Yeah, and we just leased it to them?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect.
Awesome. Any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, First Amendment to Agreement for Redevelopment. This development agreement for the Lundell Building at 413 10th Avenue requires city approval for the assignment to a new entity with the same principles. Could I have the resolution?
Resolution approving First Amendment to the Agreement for Private Redevelopment between BB Co. LLC and the City of Corleville, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Questions on this item? All right, roll call.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Chapter 4010, Interference with Streets and Use of Buildings. This ordinance changes Section 4010 to prohibit not only groups of people from blocking streets, sidewalks, and use of buildings, but adds individuals and/or storing materials on the sidewalks and streets. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2024-1006, excuse me, an ordinance amending Chapter 4010 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Corleville regarding blocking sidewalks, introduced for adoption in first consideration by council member Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions on this item?
I guess I'm curious what spurred this. Kind of, it sounds like we had a loophole in the ordinance and we're closing that, but is there, was there a specific incident or just concern about something?
Yeah, I do not know.
You want me to speak on it?
Yeah.
So it has to do with a couple incidents we've had in the last.
Oh, definitely, she comes to the microphone. That way we can hear you.
It has to do with a couple incidences we've had in the last year. Instead of people blocking the sidewalk, we've had individuals, just single people blocking the sidewalk, refusing to leave, and we don't have means of making them move and open the sidewalk for the general public to move through.
So a single person could block a sidewalk somehow?
Yes.
How did they do that?
Their personal belongings and them, and kind of like just setting up on the sidewalk and.
Playing hockey.
Not moving. No hockey, it has nothing to do with any sports or anything.
Okay.
All right.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
In this ordinance, if there was, you know, a group of people that wanted to do a public demonstration, do they have to file permit to receive that, that right to do a public demonstration, or is that illegal as well for public demonstrations?
Even with public demonstrations, you're not allowed to block the sidewalk.
Yeah, but I mean, you could, okay, yeah, I mean, you never have.
Yeah, I think that's a difference.
But you could walk up and down the sidewalk.
Yeah, the way the ordinance is written currently, it says congregation with other people, and so that is what prevents like a demonstration on a sidewalk.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. And finally, we have our consent calendar. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So move.
Could I get a, I'll get a second from Huen. Okay, moved by Goodrich, seconded by Huen. Could I have the roll call, please?
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Next, we have the city administrators' report.
Yes, I'd just like to make sure everybody's aware that next Monday on the DDI or the Birching Diamond at First Avenue and Interstate 80, they'll be going back down to one lane in each direction over the bridge, and on approaching 9th, they will be doing sidewalk work along the Trader Joe's area, and they'll be doing a lot of the landscaping. And so the hope is that they'll be done with that work in about two weeks. Either way, they'll be back open for the football game, the next home game, but, so people should just be aware there, it'll be a little bit different again starting next Monday, so for that work to be finalized. And then we have a community shred day coming up from 8:00 to noon on September 28th at the outdoor pool parking lot.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, mayor's report, I actually don't have anything this evening, so we will go on to the city attorney's report.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Neither does Kevin.
Okay, good enough, good enough. And we will jump down to committee and council members' report, and we'll start down at this end with council member Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't have anything either.
Okay, council member Vogel Zhang.
Not a lot, other than to, in memory of what happened 23 years ago, 2,977 people went to bed and didn't make it home the next night. Firefighters, law enforcement officers, EMS professionals, innocent individuals in New York, and Pennsylvania, and DC perished, and they are to be remembered. So it was a sad day in our history. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Council member Huen.
I don't have much tonight, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to highlight the art that we have in our community, so we have a, you know, Center for Performing Arts, which allow for a lot of classes and performing arts camp to take place, and just this past summer, they host 40 weeks' worth of camp in a nine-week span. That's a lot of classes that, you know, a lot of young people in our community get to participate in. They welcome 634 young people to camp right here in the Corleville-Iowa City area, and they serve an additional 420 student participation through the Footlighter Traveling Playhouse program elsewhere in Iowa. So they go to a lot of smaller community who don't have a strong art program, and they actually host classes that young folk can participate in there and learn how to act and carry out a whole play with just, sometimes just a few hour, and sometime, you know, just one day, to remember a line and put up a play and everything. And then they provide performance opportunity for students in 17 different community across Iowa, again, along the same line of the lacking of arts in their community, or performing arts rather. Because of the traveling program, a lot of young people get to experience what it's like to watch a live performance and engage in 17 different theater making as teaching artists to lead summer programming. So I just want to, you know, give a big shout-out to not only the staff, but also, you know, the folks that is under, the staff at the Performance Center, to not only provide, but find a way to extend the performing arts above and beyond the community that we live in, and have a positive impact in the life of young people. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, council member Peterson.
Believe it or not, I have nothing tonight.
Okay, good enough, how about you?
Congratulations to the Iowa Children's Museum, they're celebrating their 25th anniversary there at the Coral Ridge Mall. They'll be having a ribbon cutting on Thursday at 4:30.
All right, excellent. All right, well, I think with all of that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Knutson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.